Okay. Couple of minutes after seven o'clock, we'll go ahead and get started. We'll call the Johnson City Council Meeting number 22-06 to order. Some new roll call, please.
Councilmember Coke?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Burkhart?
Here.
First item on the agenda is to welcome everyone that is in the audience. We're a little light on audience this evening. Do we have anybody online with us, Cindy?
Um, yes, one person.
Okay, well, we'll welcome the person that's online with us this evening. If at any point you have, you would like to speak to the council on any item that's on the agenda, just raise your hand and let Cindy know and she will, she will let you in. Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's have our new city attorney lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Do we get, hang on, do we get the little X for that?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God. In the vehicle liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the agenda approval. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
No move.
Whoops, I forgot to ask Jim if he had any changes. I'm trying to get through this agenda. Jim, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes this evening.
No changes, okay. Counsel, any changes? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
No move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Motion passed. Next item on the agenda is public communications. We have one scheduled public communication this evening and that is a proclamation recognizing Lieutenant Tyler Tompkins' retirement from the police department after 22 years of service. And Tyler, Lieutenant Tompkins is not with us this evening and he is not online with us this evening. So we do want to, again, recognize his, his many years of service to the community and the outstanding job that he has done. But I think we'll just wait to read the proclamation at his going away. Reception that will be held next Monday at one o'clock at the Public Safety Building. So everyone is invited to attend. So we'll just, we'll handle that at that time. We are under public communications. Is there anyone? There's no one present here in the audience with us, but is there anyone online that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Not seeing any. We'll move on to public hearings and we do have three public hearings this evening. The first one, for A, to conduct a public hearing and consider resolution number 22-82, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an electric easement to Mid-American Energy within Outlaw Z, Johnston Town Center. And we'll open this public hearing. You know what? This clock says 6:04. We'll open this public hearing at 7:04.
Can you pull up the third attachment of where the tunnel? Covering this item for Clayton, I think it's fairly straightforward. Up on the second one today.
Adam, look, can I just center? Did they put all of that up today?
You know, I could have sworn I woke up this morning and there was nothing up in the air.
I didn't think so.
Left for lunch and by the time I got back, I think it was, it was all up.
Anyway, sorry, I just wanted to confirm that.
I was very surprised too, so. Sorry, maybe I called out the wrong one for you.
You mean the new construction up there? That's what I thought, so I was walking around yesterday, there's nothing.
Probably can spot the stuff forward, but. The easement goes along the southern portion of Merle Hay Road in front of the commercial building and then, yeah, there we go. Long 60 seconds. So that will serve the first two commercial buildings. Happy to answer any questions you've got for that, but otherwise it's just going to give power to these buildings and it does not impact.
Counsel, have any questions for Adam?
When are we going to hear about what's going in some of those buildings? I know that you know, but we don't know and I get all these questions.
I will invite Troy Hanson to come to the city council meeting and see what he would like to share.
Okay.
Okay, that'll be good.
All great stuff.
On that same note, I saw the Kiwanis Pancake breakfast advertisement banner hanging outside the construction fence and I got really excited that it was going to be a breakfast place. You caught my attention, Teresa or whoever.
Yeah, that was.
I can confirm the Kiwanis are not one of the tenants.
What about pancakes? All right.
Do we have any questions with merit?
Whoa.
So true.
If not, we will close the public hearing then at 7:06. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 22-82?
Aboo.
Second.
Motion and second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 4B, conduct a public hearing for the 2022-2023 budget and consider resolution number 22-81, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2022-2023 and authorizing tax levies on all taxable properties within the city of Johnston. Resolution number 22-77, confirming an established public purpose for economic development, arts and culture. And resolution number 22-78, approving transfers for 2022-2023 fiscal year. We'll open this public hearing at six, or 7:08.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I appreciate that you taking the time tonight to sit back and maybe listen a little bit about overview of the budget and the process we went through this year. And I realized that in board docs tonight, there were a lot of documents that were presented. And we talk about that at staff a little bit. And the reason all of those exhibits are in there separately are, so if you tell me which one you want to look at, I can pull it up a little, Cindy can pull it up a little quicker than thumbing through our 28-page memo on top of 20 exhibits as well. But included in all of those documents that were with the council agenda were the state forms that are required for us to submit. The memo that the city administrator and I authored, all of those exhibits that went with the memo. Then the two resolutions that were mentioned, that the mayor mentioned. And then also on there is the PowerPoint presentation that we're going through tonight so that the public can also see that and look at those charts a little clearer if they would like. And then I'm going to go through that PowerPoint quickly tonight. I'm not going to read you the slides, I'm just going to kind of talk through some of these. So to begin with, our regular taxable valuation growth over the past six years has averaged 4.41% per year. And this year's actual 100% valuation growth was 7.03% and our taxable growth was 3.75%. The 2020 census, the official population for Johnston was 24,064, which is a 39.3% growth from our 2010 census and a, or, and/or a 17.6% growth from our 2015 special census. Either way, this represents an average growth of about 3.52% per year. Our public safety departments continue to grow, we continue to add trail miles, both paved and traveling lanes in our public works departments. Next slide, please, Cindy. We have some additional growth statistics that were presented in this presentation for you to take a look at. I'd like you to note the increase in the number of utility customers that we've had over the past seven years. And that while the utility billing and accounting department has grown, internally, our staffing, account staffing department hasn't grown. And we certainly have had some growing pains. The new facility has helped somewhat. We have been able to separate our staff now and have a separate office to help with some of that. But an 18.2% in our water customers, 22.4% growth in sewer. That's quite substantial in my opinion. Next slide. There were various issues that staff and council faced for this budget year. And of course, with a growing community and our limiting resources available to support such, it was difficult for us to get through some of these things. A couple that I'm going to highlight here, although there's a long list. We do know that in 2021, the legislature took action to phase out the backfill that cities receive, have received since the implementation of the commercial and industrial rollback that went into place and when they rolled that, rolled back that property to 90%. Starting with this FY '23 budget, the city will be receiving approximately $108,000 less, $108,000, $10820 less in backfill replacement dollars. And by the FY '27 budget, the city will have lost over half a million dollars of backfill replacement dollars. The maximum levy for Johnston in FY '23 is only a .97% increase or $126,150 in property tax revenue. The 2% threshold, which was part of that 2000, or part of the legislation that took place last year, two years ago, I guess it was. Our 2% growth would have been 258,190. We were well below that 2% growth. Next slide, please. Tonight's public hearing establishes a property tax levy rate of $10.68 per $1,000 of taxable valuation, which is a five cent increase from last year's levy rate. However, this is an increase in property tax dollars collected of $276,000. That's made up of $146,000 in debt service dollars, $3,000 in ag land dollars and 126 in our general or special levy. But it's a total increase of only 1.61%. Next slide. Any, we had decision packages that were presented to the council again this year. And any proposed budget increase for a new program, equipment, new positions, or such required decision package by a department. And decision packages provide that detailed information. The justification and any of the expenses that are needed have to be supplied in that decision package. Determining which decision packages to fund enables the city council to help establish a priorities for spending and service levels to meet the needs of our growing community. Departments presented $1,348,000 worth of decision packages this year and the city council authorized $1,300,000 worth using funding sources that did not affect property tax levy rate. You'll see by the slide how those decision packages are being funded. Next slide. Included in those decision packages were some additional positions, specifically an additional firefighter, a recreation position, a public safety support specialist, which is a position that's going to be shared by the police and the fire department, an additional parks maintenance worker. And we're going to be transitioning a current part-time library position to a full-time library position. Next slide. These were some additional decision packages that are funded that were not personnel-related, but they're funded from other revenue sources such as the utility money, road use tax money, TIF maybe, most likely utility and road use tax money. This slide, I added this slide and wanted to call out or make some, pay some special attention to this. But at the time of the local option sales and service election within the city, we had stated several times that we plan to lower the tax rate by about a dollar with the passage of the vote. And the city has done more than that, in fact. In the first budget year, after the collection began of local option sales tax money, we lowered the tax levy rate by $1.20 and that was solely a relief in the debt service area of our budget. Then in FY '22, we lowered the levy rate by $1.75 using the debt service levy and we chose to fund some positions requested through decision packages. And we funded the city's portion of the cost of the trestle-to-trestle bridge in the CIP. And then proposed in this budget tonight, the FY '23 budget is a reduction of the levy rate by $2.22 using $1.35 towards debt service levy relief and 87 cents for decision packages and general fund property tax relief, not focused on debt service relief, but general, general property tax relief. So the council has certainly met their commitment to the public that they had said at the time of the election. Next slide, please. This is just a quick reminder of the agencies outside of the local government that have requested funds from the city. There was only an increase of $770 to the Johnston Community Ed, an increase to the Greater Des Moines Partnership by $1,910. We did increase the partnership to Johnston Partnerships for the Healthy Community by $10,000. And last year, we contributed the same funds we had from the year before for the Arts Council because of COVID things that had stopped their requests from happening. So this year it's just $750, which happens to be new. The other areas were not changed in our funding levels. Next slide, please. I'm not going to read all of these projects, you can certainly do that. And with the department directors that are here, of course, if there is a project that you see up there that you'd like to ask a question about, I'd be happy to ask them to speak about that and, and talk about it. But the city council and the staff worked for months on the FY '23 capital improvement plan. And we do a five-year plan. The city will be continuing to fund a number of projects that started, some in '21, we're finishing in '22. Some are starting in '22, might get done in '22. And then we're starting some in '22, they'll get done in '23. But we have a lot of things going on in our community. The complete CIP is included in the budget book and then it's also a separate document, both of which are on our website already tonight, available to the public, available to you at any time. Next slide, here were some additional projects. There will be, there are several on, several on some of these slides. These were the stormwater projects and the water. And then here were the significant park projects that are in the budget. Next slide. This is just a history of our property tax rate. And the two major components of our property tax levy are the general fund levy and the debt service levy. And I know that I say those words a lot and the general public kind of glosses over and wonders what I'm talking about. But those are the two things I focus on a lot. This table shows the past nine years' history for our general fund and the debt service levy. And now, back in FY '20, we started having to levy for our special revenue levy and that specifically is for employee benefits. A portion of our employee benefits for our general fund employees, not all of our benefits, but a portion of those. The FY '15 budget, this is the last year in the history that we're going to be showing you that included the very first year of the full debt service levy to pay on the Public Safety Building, which was a project that was approved by referendum vote. And then you'll notice in FY '21, from '20 to '21, where we go from 360 to 234 in the debt service levy column, which is the fourth column, that's when we started using local option sales tax money. Next slide, Cindy. This is just another thing I'd like to point out and I continually try to remind people that when you, when people get their property tax bill, they always say it's the city's taxes. The city is not the only one that charges you property taxes on your home or on your residence. And quite frankly, the city's portion of your property tax bill is about 27% of your property tax bill. It's not the full portion of your top property tax bill. And in fact, on the next slide, Cindy, it tells you that other various components of the taxing authorities that we have out in the community. Our communications manager has created an infographic that we're going to have out there that will be hopefully quicker and easy for people to maybe read. That tells some of these statistics for them. But again, this is historically, we've been around the 27% for about the last 10 years for the city of Johnston. On the next slide, I always like to give the council the comparison of our tax rates with 10 other metro area communities. And if you look at this slide, which I'm sorry, you can't see the heading very well, but the heading is the actual tax rates for the '21-'22 tax budget year, the one we're in right now, except for the city of Johnston. Because I don't know what those other cities are going to, they're all having their hearings about now as like we are. But you can see that Johnston, if we compare ourselves using the column that's called subtotal General Special Levy, where I've added the general levy. Some cities charge levy their citizens for outside the 810 and then some cities have an emergency levy and then all of us have an employee benefit levy. And you add all of those up, those are the levies that show up on the max levy hearing that I talk about, the 2% idea or rule. If you look at that column, you'll see that Johnston, out of those 10, were the fourth lowest. We're about right in the middle. Our, our debt service were number five, we're like right in the middle. So we continue to stay right where we always stay. So when people say Johnston's the most expensive place in the community, it's just not true. It's just not true when it comes to property taxes. And we can, we can show you that. So that's why I provide you this information, show you have that. Next slide, Cindy. We always use the sample of a $100,000 home because if you have a $200,000 or $300,000 home, hopefully you can multiply and, and get the effect yourself and be able to calculate something or calculate what the tax rate is more closely to your own home. But in this particular case, if you looked at the very bottom line, we're saying that your house is taxed or assessed at $100,000 because of what's called rollback in the state of Iowa. They roll back the value of your home and this year it's at 54.1302%. So we're only going to get charged taxes on $54,130 of that home times our new tax rate of 10.67513. Although I've said 1068 all night, I've just been rounding, folks. It's 10.67513. What this chart's telling you is that if you had a $100,000 home on January 1st, 2020, because your assessment is the January, the year before my budget year started. So January 2020 or January 2021, if you had a $100,000 house, your property taxes are going down $21.81, even though your rate was raised. So we can do that pretty easily for anybody's home. If they wanted to call me, I'd be happy to walk them through there, show them how to do it. That would be, I'd have no problem doing that. The next slide then is.
Teresa, can you just, can you go back to that resident $100,000 home? The last column over, the levy percent change.
So the levy went up .00419%, the five cents. The levy rate from 10.63042 to 10.67.
Was that in percentage or is that in dollars? Because it's, if it was in dollars, it should be .0419, right?
It's a percent, the levy percent change.
Well, the column.
Levy is the change. The percent change column is the percentage change of your dollars. So so your, your, your property tax bill is going down $21.81 and in theory, that means it's going down 3.64%. But the actual levy change is the levy percent change.
Right, but so it, but usually percentage would be, I'm trying to figure out, is it a .4% change?
It's .4. No, I'll, I'll double check that, Tom, just to make sure. I've done it so many times.
Yeah, that column is a little confusing.
Okay, I'll look at it again. It's the same formula here, this one would be point. This one is going up $4.02 and the percent change is .42%. So a business, because their valuation always just rolled back 10% to $90,000, that five cents is going to cost them $4.02 more a year. That's why that slide is in there. I'll double check that and come back to you before tonight's over.
And it doesn't have to, no rush, I just, at some point it'll be fine.
Next slide, Cindy. So this is a graph that shows the program areas and the cost of those areas for the property tax payment on that $100,000 home. So as an example, that $100,000 home gets an entire year's worth of public safety services or police, fire, emergency management for $151.24. So if you added up all of those dollar amounts per program area, you would get that $577.85, which was their yearly tax bill. Next slide. This is just a graph depicting the funding sources for all the revenues the city budgeted in FY '23. You'll note that our property taxes are 21% of all property tax, of all revenues that we receive within the city. And then the next slide is our expenditures. And the general fund is what makes up public safety, public works, health and social services, culture, recreation, community, all of these to the, to the clockwise side of that chart. Other than public works also includes some road use tax things. And culture and recreation might include some park district funds or something like that. So there's a little bit scattered in there, that's not general fund, but for the most part, that's what those are. Whereas enterprise funds where it's 27%, that's your water, wastewater, storm sewer, capital projects, debt services and transfers.
Well, how would you explain transfers to the, to someone like me? I understand public safety and debt and all that other stuff. What's, transfer is moving money from one thing to the other, is it not debt or?
No, not necessarily. And we can certainly look at that exhibit. If you looked at that exhibit Q, which was all the transfers that are going to be made throughout the year, we transfer a lot of money from like water operation to pay water debt. But that's all internally, I mean, I'm transferring in and I'm transferring out. So if you looked at both the revenue and the expenditures, that number is the same. So I just have to show it that that, I'm including all of those transfers in our budget. So if you looked back up at the revenue slide, the revenues there were 17%. the revenues there were 17% as well.
I kind of hear what you're saying, and I think that you're not going to be able to teach me tonight. But it seems weird that a, a process of dealing with our budget is shown up in here as where we get our funding from.
And on top of that, we now even have to pass a resolution so that you folks actually know that I do transfer all of that, because some cities were just doing it whenever they wanted. You know, you, I, I historically have always brought a resolution to the city council in November of the year, middle of the budget year, to say, these are all the transfers we're doing. This is why we're doing it. As an example, you transfer, historically you might transfer, well, you transfer $81,000 of hotel motel tax money to the Parks and Trust Park and Trail Fund for the trails. You transfer so much hotel motel tracks there, you transfer so much money there from the general fund. That's all back, that's all on that transfer page. It's telling you everywhere that we move money to and from. We transfer a whole lot of TIF money to pay debts. We transfer, yeah Cindy, I got to look behind me to do, to do this though. But to begin with, um, so this is the, the Excel spreadsheet that I work on all year long. And to begin with, so out of the general fund, we're going to transfer um into the general fund, $2,424 and, $2,424.733. Comes into the general fund from various areas. And over on the side, it's going to tell you where those areas are. So I get, um, I stand up. In, in this particular page, if this goes down. Look at your local option sales tax. How much money, right here, this is the transfer outside. So out of local option sales and service tax to the general fund, I'm going to transfer 166,330 for public safety things. I'm going to transfer 234 dollars, 234,344 dollars for culture and reader decision packages. From what I said earlier, we use BOSS for decision packages or other things. So all of these things that take to the general fund, to the general fund, to the general fund, to the general fund, that's where they're going. To the general fund, to the general fund, from the library trust, we take money out of the library trust. The library for books, so.
I get, I get what you're saying. I guess my whole thing is, it's a process, it's not actually saying anything about where that money was generated, and it doesn't say anything about where that money is being actually spent.
Right.
It's a process.
Right, which is why there's a whole separate resolution that you're passing tonight that lists all of the transfers. It's not even that sheet, it was a separate, I don't know if you could pull up the resolution Cindy? In the-
I saw it, and I don't want to, I don't want to sidetrack you.
But that's what that is. But now, because of all that, there are changes, I have to show that. And if I didn't put that in here, all our percentages would be off. So I kind of have to show them in my charts. And I guess, and then in, to end with here in the last slide, just a summary of our revenues and expenditures and where our fund balance is going to end up at. And then the very last um slide that I put up there is each of the fund balances, because I always report to you by fund. I'm reporting to you what uh the beginning balance, we assume the beginning balance is going to be, again, it's estimate, what we've budgeted for revenues, what we've budgeted for expenditures, and what we're budgeting for ending fund balances. And then um, I can, I would gladly go through what's a deficit, what's not, and explain all of that. But um, I don't need to do that, I guess, unless you want me to. I know, I get kind of geeky and talk about it forever, and everybody kind of glosses over, so I can, I can stop. But I'd be happy to answer any question.
Does the council have any questions for Teresa?
I'm going to pull up my Excel spreadsheet here.
I do have a question, but I think it's a very good job that you put up those slides. That slide is really, whereas Cliff Notes kind of thing, it's really explains everything. Thank you Teresa.
Well, and I thought the written memo that you and Jim prepared was very, very good. And it wasn't too long, I thought you covered everything in a concise manner, and I really appreciated it.
Is any of the council members want the slideshow presentation that Teresa has shared, if for any reason?
It's in the document.
Oh, it is, okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I, I just want to express my appreciation to not only Teresa, but everybody in this room that uh spends a lot of time working on the budget. And it all starts with you all, because we start talking about this, you know, in September, August, September timeframe, the HR Finance Committee, we have many meetings where we talk about different facets of the budget. And it all comes together, um, you know, with presentation that Teresa made tonight. And she does, she does a bulk of the work, but everybody in this room is, is very engaged and very active in the budget process and appreciate your all's help and support. And I want to just express for staff how much I appreciate everything that they do to get us to this point.
And Jim, you took the words out of my mouth, because I was going to thank all of the staff as well, in particular Teresa, but everybody, everybody who contributes to the, to the proposal and the preparation of the budget, and the city council members for all of the great input that, that you provide to get us to the point where, you know, we have a budget that, that we, we can all be proud of. And in fact, you know, I, I agree with Councilwoman Martin, when I was going through the um uh, the memo today, I, you know, I just, it, you know, it just reinforced for me, you know, we, we work very hard every year to keep the property taxes as low as possible. But look at everything that we're funding, you know, all of the services, all of the infrastructure, all of the wonderful parks and trails projects. And in fact, you know, I, you know, I've got it on my screen here, but on page 21, um, you wrote into the memo and, and reinforced for us all of the services that our residents' property taxes go to pay for. You know, great police protection, top notch fire rescue, miles and miles of trails for our citizens, acres and acres of parks, miles of good roads and infrastructure. And the last bullet, I would amend just a little bit to say, uh excellent customer service from all of our staff across all of, all of our city departments. You know, I, you know, the city hall and, and library provide great services. But I think, you know, I hear all the time from our residents about how well they are treated by, you know, all of our, all of our departments. And, and that, that goes a long ways. When, when our residents know that they are getting the kind of services they are and, and the courtesy from our staff and delivering those services, it, it makes me proud, and I know it makes all of us proud. So anyway, thanks, thanks so much. Again, job, job incredibly well done.
And I did double check, it is, um, it is um point 00419 um is the percentage of the actual levy rate. So the five cent difference in the levy rate is um, how did you say that clearer than I'm saying?
Based on 10 dollars, basically $1. It's five cents on $1, it would be point oh five.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll figure it out later.
Any other questions or comments, council?
I, I think, I, I agree with everything that everybody said. I do think that, that last page, the fund balances, it might be a little helpful, again, not tonight, but just sort of to, to be helpful to kind of get a better understanding of all these different funds. Like, we have capital projects and we have debt service. And so what's the difference, the ending balances in each of those funds? What, you know, kind of a, you know, high level, you know, what's the type of um re- resources that are in these funds, proprietary, uh, you know, some special revenue? Understanding, it's kind of, you know, as you think about, we all, we spend a lot of time talking about the general fund ending balance, but it's a very, it's really, it's like only about, maybe just a little over 10% of our overall ending fund balance. So it, that would just be, and again, you don't need to go through it now, but just it, it, for helping it for us to understand, you know, these types of things. So, you know, when people have questions for us, we're able to kind of fully get into that.
Yeah, I don't know Cindy, if you've already, you're already out of there. But um, just generally quickly, like you know about the 25% for the general fund. In special revenue, you aren't really supposed to have, uh, okay, you aren't really supposed to have much of a um large ending fund balance in just regular special revenue. But that has our road use tax fund in there and some parks districts fund. Our tax, road use tax fund is our, our largest, but also right now, all your ARPA money is in there. That's why there's 8 million in there, which you normally wouldn't have had that much money in there. Then special revenue, or except TIF special revenue, um, you know, we don't have money in there that we don't have debt for. So that, that explains that one. Debt service, again, uh you'll see that that cash is going down. Um, Matt Stufel is continually pounding on me a little bit not have so much cash value in my debt service fund that I really shouldn't have cash value in debt service. So I've been trying to use those beginning balances to get things done. Capital projects, you know, that just goes from year to year, and whether a project is continued on or not continued on, and whether we've already bonded or not bonded for the money, on whether I have a big beginning balance or an ending balance. And then of course proprietary funds, um, you know, we're supposed to have almost three to six months worth of our revenue in there. So there's reasons-
Sewer and sewer and water.
Yeah, so there's reasons for those balances, so I guess I could have said that.
Oh, that's perfect.
Quick enough earlier, so.
Good, this is a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the audience or online that would like to address the council? Seeing none, councils, are there any further questions while we're in the public hearing? If not, we will close the public hearing then at 7:43. We have two resolutions, the first being Resolution Number 22-81, do we have a motion to approve?
Hello, second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
For her?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-77?
Go move.
Second.
Motion and second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes, motion passed. And do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-78?
Go move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to item 4C, conduct a public hearing and consider the following Resolution Number 22-86, adopting plan specifications form of contract and estimate of cost. Resolution Number 22-87, making award construction contract. And Resolution 22-88, approving construction contract and bond for the construction of the Lou Clarkson softball complex improvements phase two. We'll open this public hearing at 7:44.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. If you could put up the PowerPoint just as a reminder for what this project is. Lou Clarkson Phase Two, the main component of this project is a restroom slash concession building. There is a rendering on there. That, um, there were two bid alternates within the project. One being the, the concrete stairs that you see as a secondary uh entrance up into the concession area, as well as shade structures over top of the uh bleacher areas at the softball complex. On March 15th, uh we received um bids for this project. Uh, we had a total of three bids that came in. Um, the cost opinion from the engineer was 728,155. The low bid came in at 919,960, which is approximately 20% over the cost opinion of the, the contract or of the engineer. There's a lot of reasons for this. The main reason for it is that materials and labor costs right now are, are skyrocketing. Pretty much everything that is being bid right now is coming in considerably over the cost. This project, as far as the design and estimates, really began about 12 months ago, um, as we worked through uh Lou, uh representatives from youth softball. So a lot of these cost estimates are probably six to eight months old that we had coming into it. So it's not a, a terrible surprise that it was over, especially with the bidding climate that we have. With that, we do feel, um, and the engineer does feel that it's in our best interest to go ahead and move forward with this, uh, and accept this bid. Primarily because if we were to bid this out again, um, we're not going to get different results. In fact, most likely, our cost is going to continue going up for the next several months. Um, the other alternate that we considered was the possibility of scaling down the building. But realistically, as we worked through uh the Youth Softball Association, this is the facility really that they need. And I know we want to be proud of the facility that we put out there. And uh, um, it was really important to both the city as well as, as to youth softball to have a, a very attractive building that was going to be useful. So with that, we, I had some conversations with Teresa to figure out how can we pay for this. Um, we have 700,000 basically in next year's budget. We do have a carryover of about 150,000 from uh the first phase. So we do have some money in the Lou Clarkson account. And that brings us up to about 850,000. I sent an email out to the park board to discuss the possibility of using a portion of the park and trail improvement fund as a, more or less a note to, to get this project done. They felt that would, was a good uh use of the fund. Teresa and I also discussed the possibility with phase three, if we borrowed the full amount that we're requesting, could we pay the park and trail improvement fund back for those dollars that were used? And uh she indicated that that was a possibility. So with all that uh in consideration, we do um, we do think it would be in our best interest to move forward with this project and to go ahead and award the bid, bid. Uh, the low company is Concrete Connections LLC. We have worked with them quite a bit in different projects, mainly trail projects recently. Uh, they are Johnston uh entity, so it makes it nice. Um, and we have a good working relationship with them. So with that, I would take any.
Are you taking the alternate or you won't be taking?
We are not taking bid alternates. We are going to shift bid alternates. The stairs are really not a critical component of it. Obviously, it's not ADA, it was just more or less, we discussed as a potential shortcut that people will probably try to go up and over that wall. We just won't have that, so it'll be a solid wall on that side. Um, the shade structure will just shift into the next phase.
John, you said the contractor has worked with us on trails. Have they done this kind of work?
They have done building work as well, they just haven't done any.
Not for us, okay.
They had originally bid um with Terra Phase Two, when we had building work out at Terra. They just went a little bit.
You know, the one thing I would say is that since being on the council consistently, I've seen us get better than, lower than our uh engineer's estimate, almost constantly. This is probably the first time that I can recall that we had a significant one that was over the engineer's estimate. Um, and all I can say is up at Iowa State, all we, our bids are coming in high too. So I do think that in this atmosphere that we're in now, this is probably the best case we could get, and, and we should proceed.
I do think, wasn't the Merle Hay intersection, wasn't that over cost opinion too?
Other questions or comments for John? This is a public hearing, do we have anyone in the audience or online that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing then at 7:50. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-86?
Go move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Uh, Councilmember Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
For her?
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have- Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two dash eighty-seven?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Send a vote, please.
For Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Perkart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Motion passed. And do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two dash eighty-eight?
I move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Send a vote, please.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Perkart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Send a vote, please.
For Perkart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin? Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item seven A, consider approval of resolution number twenty-two dash seventy-six. A resolution to become a founding member of the Central Iowa Water Works Water Works.
We talked about this issue at several council meetings um related to the creation of the Central Iowa Water Works, which be the regional water authority. We um have participated up to this point um in discussions that have been happening since two thousand seventeen. And now there have a a plan to move forward with um now reviewing a twenty-eight E and twenty-eight F agreement for the communities to create the the um Central Iowa Water Works. And so what this does, it it says we are interested and committed to working through that process. The plan is to work until hoping by in September, having the twenty-eight E and twenty-eight F to to uh completed so that that can come back to the city councils for consideration as far as participating with the um with the Central Iowa Water Works. If you recall at our last meeting, we had Matt Stofel come in and talk about the finance part of it. And that certainly is something we need to keep in mind, but this this really just commits the city to being a part of the process to help create those agreements and uh the the Central Iowa Water Works.
Council, any questions for Jim?
Jim, in the attached documents, there's a Central Iowa um twenty-eight E, twenty-eight F agreement, and it's like a draft. Is that will that is that kind of a starting point for the document? The 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 driving kind of the the document that's in referenced in the resolution?
Yes, that's correct. They've they've gone ahead and sort of drafted up the document and that the group that will move forward will be working off of that draft.
Okay. I'd be interested in, you know, I thought it was very helpful to have Matt Stofel's presentation at the last council meeting. The I think one of the things that was kind of interesting was it sort of seemed like under the current system, we're being overcharged for water. Um and so in some ways, that the only the good news is is that that'll allow us to be able to um under the new system sort of be able to afford this eight to ten million dollar capital payment as the rates get adjusted. But I'd really like to have Matt's perspective as we go through this process and review this draft document to sort of see if that if to kind of protect us, if the new system sort of protects us from from those higher rates. Um because I that was, I mean, I think kind of uh an eye opening to hear that from his presentation last week or the last meeting. So I'm certainly kind of as we move forward, um making sure that the new system protects us um as a rate as the as a purchaser uh better than the current system does will be something that I want to make sure that this document, I'd be appreciate, I would appreciate Matt's perspective of whether he believes that that this does that or not, so.
We'll make sure that happens. And Matt, I'm sure is going to be very involved in the process because he provides a financial consultation to many of the cities plus those going water works.
Sure, exactly, exactly.
Other comments or questions, council? Do we have a motion to approve resolution resolution number twenty-two dash seventy-six?
I move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Send a vote, please.
Yes.
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 Motion passed. Item seven B, consider approval to proceed to Hanson JTC LLC for the Johnson Town Center project components.
Evening again. Uh as part of the city's borrowing for the Johnson Town Center project, just under nine hundred forty-five thousand dollars was placed into an escrow for projects in twenty twenty-two, Apple equipment purchases and public infrastructure. Uh to date, uh we haven't paid any costs out of that escrow other than cost of the issuance. Uh but Hanson has incurred some costs I wanted to review quickly tonight, and there's several more proposed. Uh the most substantial one uh that was previously earmarked uh by the city council through amendment number two with Hanson is what I've called the Pavers Project. And Cindy, if you go down to the next page. Zoom out a little bit. This would be for the Pavers currently on Rock Lake Road. Tell us it's sort of that angle. This was originally part of the lease project scope. Uh it was pulled out. Uh I mean, issues, wanted to make sure that. All a structure that sits between those two buildings, plaque. Uh so now those two buildings are going up. Uh Hanson bid as part of those two buildings, this Pavers Project. Uh the cost like John's here came in higher than Hanson was expecting at just over five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Uh and that would be not including the two areas in yellow, which committee we discussed, removing as part of that Pavers Project is the uh kind of an unknown need for that area to actually be paved. Uh but in future, when we go to phase two of the Pavers Project, which is primarily north of that entrance from Merle Hay Road, although we are doing that area immediately north of the entrance. Those two yellow areas could be added back in, uh but at this point, it didn't feel that there was a need for it. That did offer us some cost savings to kind of keep us on track. Uh nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars as we proceed through the rest of the twenty-two twenty twenty-two projects. Um and then go back up to that first page. It doesn't. Benches, trees, uh and another other uh kind of amenities along that script there in front of those two buildings. So it's not just papers. Up there and see if any questions. We're jumping to the next one.
What's this steel railing referring to? Is it like a controlling pedestrians somehow? Uh it said steel railing in the list, second item.
Uh just scroll back down a little bit, and this is just, I guess, my part. There is patio area around here. There may be some portion that falls in public property.
Not a huge number for a lot of railing, so yeah.
Any questions? Uh some of those costs that have already been incurred include about twenty thousand dollars for equipment purchases uh through Venny Works. Got ready for the ice skating season. Again, those have been costs that have been reimbursed by Hanson to Venny Works, but not paid through the escrow yet. Uh and then there's an additional uh payments to vendors of just over fifty-one thousand dollars. A big chunk of that is removal of the former city hall water main, uh which wasn't part of the original project scope. I think we wanted to get it out of there. Uh the concession uh concession stand restrooms, uh as Parks Department was working to kind of squeeze the water out of there. It wasn't draining into that very well, so they cored out a larger hole and depressed that, so it was a little easier to clean those. Uh some additional operating equipment uh for the Parks Department and some for Venny, just for the Parks Department on that. And since we got the holiday lights up, uh there's a few electrical changes and additions that we wanted to add both to the stage and timers there, so the lights would automatically turn off and turn off with us. Uh next item, next page there. Uh we've talked about how to obtain um a permanent beer and wine license for the concession stands. Uh the intent not being to open and operate that concession stand on a day-to-day basis, sell beer and wine. But as we have smaller events such as movies in the yard, potential to farmers market, uh other events that may draw a couple of hundred people, and it may make sense to offer beer and wine. Uh it's kind of expensive and time-consuming task and comes with some additional logistics on returning opened cases of beer or wine. If you do a temporary license, you don't experience those same challenges if you have a permanent license in place, which would encompass potentially this proposed seating area in front of the mural, uh which then would be expanded temporarily over the weekend or that date to include the additional service area intended for that event. Uh so for example, on farmers market, that road directly in front of the proposed seating area might be closed off. Perhaps there would be beer served before walking up and down the farmers market, for example. Uh that area would be then expanded to like work or costs incurred to be able to do that. Uh since our committee meeting, we did, I did visit back with the ABD on exactly what that proposed seating area needs to entail. Uh so just some clarification from the committee and from the council. We have to have a seating area available for up to twenty-five people. You're not required to fence that for the state rules, although the police department uh would like to see areas in which services being alcohol services being done, particularly for large events to be fenced off. We're meeting to discuss that some more next week. The state does not require that be fenced off at any time, whether it's open or closed. They do not require that the tables and the chairs are there, only that they're stored onsite and available for use upon request. But there was some conversation about um kind of blocking off that mural uh with tables, chairs and fencing. Um I think because the intent of our beer and wine license is really to utilize a larger area on occasion. We don't need to have fencing tables and chairs positioned in front of that mural on a day-to-day basis. As part of that, though, we would be paving, we'd be removing some of this landscape directly in front of that mural and putting an irred colored concrete, that's in gray color, or those wood chips to be able to accomplish that. Uh we do have a cost for that, that's sixty-seven hundred dollars. If we did move forward with some uh removable fencing, that cost would be approximately five to seven thousand dollars. Uh but we're not actually proposing to incur that cost yet. Let's see a little bit more about how this space would operate, I think, if we would move forward with that. Uh so looking for any additional feedback you may have on that, but the committee conversation was go ahead and forward concrete paving and with the Pavers Project minus that yellow area.
Questions or comments for Adam?
Adam, my only question is, I actually like the uh the idea of trying to go with that permanent permit just for ease of logistics. I also like the example temporary fencing that you pitched, even though that's not part of our approval tonight. But do we have place on site to be able to store fencing as well as enough tables and chairs to kind of meet those obligations in case of need?
We do. We do have uh kind of the green plastic fencing that was used as the barricade for the garden during the grand opening that is stored behind that mural. And then we do have some tables and chairs already in there as well. This is sort of the type. I think we're more or less already set on the tables and chairs. It's just a matter of double checking our count and and getting a few more in that storage area. Uh just a final note, been looking forward, um council seen a couple of times different renditions of the trellis that would go between those two buildings. We did discuss that committee meeting. We're going to come back with a little bit more enhanced signage, I think, in particular on that trellis. Um so we're being, we're working on that right now. Uh just make sure it's kind of meeting the committee's expectations, but you'll see that in the future. Uh and then we also have a couple of related concession stand improvements that we're still working eight on some of the costs associated with that coming in front of you. Beyond that, uh I think Venny Works is more or less wrapped up their equipment purchases. Uh so I think we're hoping at this point will be a little bit under that nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars uh and should wrap up all those final expenses yet this calendar year. And that's all I have for you. Any additional questions?
Any further questions? If not, do we have a motion to proceed?
So moved.
Second.
It works. Any further discussion? Send a vote, please.
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Perkart?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item seven C, consider approval of claims in the amount of nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-one cents.
I move.
Approval. Motion and a second?
Second.
Discussion. Send a vote, please.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Perkart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passed. City Administrator Staff comments. Jim?
Got a few things I want to mention to the council this evening. First of all, we did receive notice last week that um uh some funding that we requested from Representative Axney. Um we were um on the list to be funded. It was a million dollars towards the Northwest sanitary sewer expansion. And um she submitted that as one of the projects for her district and and we were fortunate to be on the 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 list of uh to be funded. So we asked for that, I think, last fall, and we just recently received information that we are on the list to get funded for that project, so.
So we received the funding, Jim?
We have not yet, but it's it's on the list to be submitted for. I'm not sure Congress, do they take an ax on that yet, you know?
I think. I think both chambers have passed the bill and it's been sent to the president.
So um so that was a a good thing. Again, we applied last fall, I believe, and and we're on the list to to receive funding for that. So keep our fingers crossed that all gets taken care of. Um another item, I just wanted to let the council know, um the yard waste begins on April second. Um I know that a lot of people are waiting for that.
You're hardly here, Jim. Can you maybe speak into that?
Um the yard waste program is going to begin again on uh on April second, and uh so just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. The um let's see. Um oh, and we passed a a resolution, item seven or five I uh this evening, and that was related to Janet Walworthy intending training for to be a certified public communication program, going through that training through TCU, um Texas Christian University. I just wanted to point out to the council that that was a program that she actually found a grant grant money that would be available for that. And so we put letters of reference together for Janet, and she was the recipient. I think she was the only one in the in the country that got that grant. And it pays for fifty percent of the training around twenty-one hundred dollars. So um I wanted to congratulate Janet for that, and it's going to be great that she's going to be able to take advantage of that program. And uh the last thing I had was um we did get notification that um Kevin Foley, uh that there's a uh an event coming up uh to talk about the airport project. And uh there's, so it's going to be a public meeting on um April fifth, and I'll be airport authority board, and they're going to hold a workshop on the design of the the um um terminal. We did send to the council last week, we got information that um right now Des Moines is in line for about fifty-eight point seven million dollars of funding from the the state for the um uh for the terminal project. So they are short of the funds that they were uh needing and and are going to talk about what they can do to to help that project move forward. One thing I wanted to ask the council about in our resolution that we approved, uh I blew it at the last meeting. We mentioned that we wanted to have input on the um decisions and construction, have input on and recommendations on that. I wasn't sure if that intent was for a council member to represent us on the the committee once they get those going, or is that something that you want staff to represent the city? It would be the committee that's going to talk about, it'll be the advisory committee to the airport authority on the terminal design. Um and I just was curious what direction that you want, whether you felt that uh the intent was to be a staff represent representative or a city council representative.
Jim, do you have a sense of what other communities are doing?
I do not.
Why don't you find out?
I can ask that, sure.
Why don't you find out?
And then I guess one other thing I wanted to mention, you may recall last fall, we received feedback from neighbors up near Crown Point related to the uh potential noise from the uh concerns about the from the, again, concerns about the Ignite Project, and we did approve it a couple of council meetings ago, a agreement with TerraCon to do some sound monitoring. I just want to let the council know, we are going to put the monitors out beginning tomorrow, and our plan is we're going to have four different monitoring periods, and so we're going to have one up for a week right now, and that's to collect the baseline information, how much noise is naturally in the area right now, before any construction and before any buildings are up. Our intent would be, once the trees are leafed out, then we will have a second week of monitoring. Once the Ignite Building goes up, we'll have another week of monitoring, and then we'll have the final monitoring when there may be some activities up there, so we can see what the noise concerns are for the neighborhood. And we also talked about that may help us put together a more robust sound or noise ordinance at the end of the day, but I just want to let the council know that we are moving forward with that, and we're actually going to put the, the monitors up for the first week of monitoring, beginning tomorrow for the, for the next seven days. That's all I have for this evening.
Anything else from staff? Seeing none? Councilwoman Martin?
Um, I have a couple of things. The Art Council has, you know, some pretty creative people on the board, and Eric's still here, and he was at our last meeting, and they have, you know, they, they want to do a lot of, a lot more events at the town center and maybe with Green Days, et cetera. A lot of these events involve getting children involved in art, and they need to raise some money. So one of the suggestions I made, and I'm hoping that my council members and maybe department heads would be willing to do this, last year at Green Days, they provided the two-by-two, I think they were two-by-two white panels for paintings, and I'm thinking we should have, I, I suggested that maybe there could be a celebrity painting section, and we could auction off those paintings, and, and they, and the proceeds of the auction would go to the Art Council, and, you know, there might be some healthy competition between departments and, and council members, and they might stack the audience with relatives to be bidding on those art pieces, and it might be a way, it might be fun competition and a way to fund the Art Council, and so, um, we'll put something together to ask you, but I, I will ask that you all consider it. You know, they need some funding, and it could be, it could be a fun thing. The other thing, I'm glad John Schmitz here, he's told me that they collected seedlings from the beech tree that's going to be cut down, you know, my favorite, close to my heart beech tree, and they're not sure exactly how many trees have sprouted from the seed. Yeah, so I think it's pretty cool, and I think, you know, depending on how many get going, I think we should plan on having at least one of those end up here at the town center, and maybe in, in, as far as they can, into our parks, too. I think that would be cool. I have one more thing. Oh, I've gotten, I'm getting a couple of different emails from different groups talking about Afghan refugees that have been resettled into Johnston, and about lists of clothing items or household goods that they need, and one of the groups that is trying to collect some of these stuff have, have asked if we could put their flyer asking for donations into the city newsletter, and Jim has said likely you could, which is great. So I'm just going to put this out to the rest of the council and departments to take a look at that, although, at those lists. The idea is, since the city is doing their big spring cleanup on, I think it's the eighteenth, that people, while they're going through their closets looking for stuff for the cleanup, maybe they're looking for stuff for these Afghan families. So as much as you could promote it on your own social media, once we get that out, that would be great. Thank you.
Councilwoman Burkhart?
I, I'll be rather brief, I want to echo the sentiments of everyone else who remarked how appreciative they were of staff and fellow council members in preparing through budget. I especially appreciate it, since this was my first budget go-around. You made it rather painless for me, but also dumbed it down, which is exactly what I needed, but also, I, I think you did your best to be as prudent and offer to be as great a steward as possible of taxpayer money, and I'm very grateful for all of that. So thank you, Teresa, and thank you all for your help in, in making sure that we're looking after those taxes, because they're not just the cities, they're not just one, the entity, they're all of our money, coming and pooling together to provide a better community.
Councilman Coke?
You know, I would just add, I think, you know, I really appreciate the very collaborative approach that we take around the budget time metal and staff, but also around the council table of people being willing to have tough questions asked about an item or a proposal. People don't take those tough questions personally, they respond in a very professional and, and open way. I think we've just developed over time a very good, working, trusting relationship with the staff and, and the council, and, and we're really lucky, because a lot of cities don't, don't have, don't have that, and I think we, we shouldn't take that for granted, so just want to pass along my appreciation to the staff and other members of the council for that, for the work we've done to, to try to do this in a very mature collaborative way.
Thanks, when ready.
Yes, I echo what Brian Burkhart and Tom Coke said about cooperating and doing the budget session, it was really, as I said earlier, a, a small presentation, but detailed enough for us to understand, it's like click notes thing, we really appreciate all you guys have done that, support that, and so thank you very much for that. And secondly, I'd like to thank Janet for setting up the new website and the app that for the Johnston City, it was, it's really good-looking, and it's really, well, we're moving into the modern age, so she's done a good job of that, I appreciate that, but thank you very much for that, guys.
Councilman Evans? I just have a question, John. The vandalism that occurred at Tara Park, are we coming and getting that fixed?
Jim, can you steam mic with?
This afternoon, we sent video, it was on camera, so we did send video this afternoon to the police department for their review. And we comment, I had heard previously from a still photo was that, I'm not sure which officer indicated that they think they know who did it, that it was somebody that they kind of recognized from doing other things, so. So I, I'm sure, to talk for the chief, but I'm sure they'll take that video evidence and, and move forward with it.
In terms of just repair?
Will be, we should be, we pulled it out, and we'll be getting a new fountain there, so the, the fountain that was broke off is not usable, it can't just be put back on.
And when will the restrooms be open?
Typically, we open them right around April first, so Friday, April first is our, is our goal. Everything's set, we just have to turn on the water at this point, so.
But we had quite a bit of vandalism in, in that structure last year, so hopefully, you know, hopefully it's the same person, and we have now identified them, and maybe that will end, now that we have the cameras in there, certainly that'll help a lot.
Some of the things we're seeing on the cameras is quite interesting.
I'll bet. But I did see that you put up signs saying.
Usually about two AM.
Yeah, I did see that you put up signs saying that it is under camera surveillance, so if they're doing things they shouldn't be doing, you know, in a public place, then, you know, they're doing it for the world to see.
Yep, and I will say with all of our new structures that go up, like out at Johnston Commons with the shelter that will go there, the new concession building at Lou Clarkson, all of them will go up with camera systems there.
Unfortunately, that's what we need to do now. So do we have surveillance cameras at our other parks? Do we park?
We don't currently, but do we park in, I think this coming year is getting new shelters and restrooms, so they'll go up with the new construction.
Okay, very good. Anything else for the good of the cause? Seeing none, then we are adjourned. Jim, I have a question about.